Seven o'clock, call to order the Perry Township Board of Trustees meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Right for the consent agenda this week, we have the meeting minutes from January sixth, January eleventh, January twenty-fourth, January twenty-eighth, and check numbers three, six, eight, five, two to three, six, eight, seven, two. Is there any comments or discussion needed on those items? Did I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Fiscal office report, please.
So I attended the Ohio Township Association Conference on January twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth. An update for Oprah's, I'm still waiting to hear back. The filings have been filed with social security, but I'm still waiting to hear whether they're going to potentially reimburse them, reimburse us for any of the payments that were made in error. A year-end update, the W two's ten ninety-nines and all year-end tax filings have been completed. When I was at the OTA conference, I talked with Heidi Fout, which is the executive director for the Ohio Township Association. And she has put me into contact with Mary Palowski, who is the fiscal officer for Montville Township. And I've been working with Mary as far as her completion of the year. In the U A N system. I did learn with talking with Ms. Palowski, a couple of things. One is where I had been directed at the end of last year to do the temporary appropriations. Doing a quarter of it on several items wasn't sufficient. Because we have memberships and things like that, that we have to pay like the full year upfront. So I do have a resolution that I'm going to present here shortly to do some supplemental appropriations, so we can do the final appropriations. And in talking with Ms. Palowski, she had recommended that we reach out to an audit or CPA firm to assist with the preparation of the Hinkle footnotes. These are footnotes that are required to be added to our U A N system in order for us to complete the year end. If we do not have the footnotes in there, then it actually gets rejected by the state auditor's office. She said personally, she does not do her own footnotes. She consults with a CPA firm who prepares hers, make sure that all the legal, you know, jargon and stuff is in there that's required and it meets all the criteria. She put me in touch with a Mr. Phillips, who is with Charles E. Harrison Associates. I spoke with Mr. Phillips and he provided me with a quote that they would agree to compile our Hinkle footnotes for a cost of $500. And that's would even be to provide us with a template that we can use for future years should we decide to attempt to do them on our own. But like I said, Ms. Palowski says she highly recommended having somebody else do it just to make sure that it meets all the criteria that's required. So I do have information and I would like for the trustees, you know, if you guys can let me know if I have approval to proceed and enter an agreement with Charles E. Harrison Associates for the preparation of the Hinkle footnotes at a cost of $500.
I don't have a problem with it. This is something we have to get done to close out the year. So it's actually holding us up from getting that completed. Simple process. I did a little bit of research on it and it, the $500 versus the amount of time it takes to do with everything else that we have going on. Seems like a good amount to pay for saving us from that process. So I'll make a motion to enter into the agreement for $500 to get the Hinkle notes done for 2021.
Second motion.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Okay, and then of course, as I had mentioned previously, I did have to prepare a resolution, resolution twenty-two oh six, which I provided to the trustees prior to tonight's meeting. This gives us the, the Board of Trustees of Perry Township, Montgomery County, Ohio, met in regular session on the eighth day of February at seven PM at the township offices with the following members present. President Trustee Hartshorn, Trustee Mears, Trustee Music. Whereas supplemental funds received from the county should be posted as gross and the fees are posted separately. And whereas the posting of these fees need to be adjusted and accounted for in the budget for February two thousand twenty-two going forward. And whereas in accordance with O R C transfer of funds, the Perry Township Board of Trustees desire to make supplemental revenue and appropriation adjustments to line items as listed below to cover those not approved in resolution for the original budget. Now therefore be it resolved for fund one thousand. Current appropriation is twenty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. I'm requesting a change of two thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents, which would make the appropriation revision thirty thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Further directing to increase account code one zero 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 one one zero three one nine zero 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 in the amount of nine hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. An increase to account code one zero 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 one one zero three three zero 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 zero. A change amount of a hundred and ninety-five dollars. Account code one zero 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 one one zero five one nine zero 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 zero. An increase of one hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Account code one zero 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 one zero or one three zero five one nine zero 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 zero. An increase of one thousand fifty dollars. Fund two zero one one, I'm requesting an increase of seven thousand five hundred dollars. Current appropriation is three thousand two hundred and fifty. Revised appropriation would be ten thousand seven hundred and fifty. With change to two zero one one three three zero three two three zero 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 zero. The full increase of seven thousand five hundred revised appropriation would be ten thousand dollars. Fund two zero three one. Current appropriation is fifty-three thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. The change is an increase of nine thousand for a revised appropriation of sixty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Further credited to account code two zero three one three three zero three eight one zero 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 zero. An increase of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to increase the appropriation to a revised amount of five thousand. Account code two zero three one three three zero three eight two zero 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 zero. An increase of five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to make the revised appropriation seven thousand. Fund two zero four one. An increase of one thousand five hundred current appropriation is fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty. Revised appropriation would be sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty. Account code two zero four one four one zero three six zero two zero four two. The increase of one thousand five hundred dollars makes the revised appropriation two thousand dollars. Fund two zero seven one current appropriation seventy-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. An increase of sixty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, which would make it a revised appropriation of one hundred forty-five thousand two hundred dollars. To account code two zero seven one three two zero three six zero 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 zero. The full change of sixty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars would provide a revised appropriation of one hundred thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And fund two zero eight one. Current appropriation is two hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars with a change of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Revised appropriation is two hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and ten dollars. To account code two zero eight one two one zero five nine nine zero three one three. The full increase of three thousand seven hundred and fifty to bring the revised appropriation to five thousand dollars.
Make a motion to accept the resolution as read.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
And that is all I have.
Cemetery report? Our cemetery, we had four burials last month. One at Pleasant Hill, three at Eversol. We had, we have a cremation burial to do once the ground is warmer, so we can hand dig that. Cremation remains are in my office in a safe place. We met with Patrick last week to go over getting our cemetery records all moved to the digital format and onto a searchable database under our website. This process will bring our records and the township into the twenty-first century and eliminate a lot of back and forth. It'll make our records much more accurate and easier to maintain. We have a cost for Patrick to help organize, create and train us to get the documents scanned in, teach us how to add new documents, how to put every burial and GPS location with pictures into the computer. We're looking into handheld GPS that's comparable to our cell phones. Cell phones won't really actually get a close enough exact spot. So we're looking at the GPS location system. We're looking, that'll be for our pens and for our burials. We complete, when complete, we will be searchable database for anyone to get onto our website and search for any information that they would like to get. That's a cost of a thousand ninety-three ninety-five, which is actually not accurate. It's, it'll be less than that. It was a five-step program that he gave us, I give the sheet to you, but he's going to basically show us how to do that. Once we get fifty plots in the same area to where he can load them and then put that on database and then we can go from there and start adding them. We can go through section or however we want, but once he shows us how to do that.
So you all can put those in or he puts them in?
He will be here with us to help put the beginning part of it together. And then from that point forward, we can do it on our own time, or if we get volunteers to help scan our documents, trustees, if you'd like to help out, just however it works, it'll be uploaded.
Cause remember Ms. Brooks wanted to help.
Correct. But she's in Florida?
Florida.
Yeah.
Until.
That's something, it'll be infield training as well. Work with pictures and how to get them uploaded. So then like every time we have a burial, I can take a picture. And then once headstone's set, also take a picture. And then as they scroll for their name, date of death, birth, however, section, all, everything we have will come up on that website. So that's anybody from like California could look and see exactly what it looks like. So that'll kind of eliminate people being concerned with, hey, where's so-and-so buried? Well, it's hard to tell them. I mean, we talked about section signs and doing things like that. So that will be pretty interesting to get going. Also got our final proof of the cemetery rule sign. I'd like to get the approval to get the oasis to go ahead and start making our signs for us, which I don't know if you guys all have seen this, is in the lobby.
Same email, Chris.
Same, same thing that we sent out an email so that everybody can see it, but just in a little bigger form.
And where are we going to post those at, Caleb?
Those will be at the entrances to all of the cemeteries. There'll be two actually at, at Piermont because there's multiple entrances there. So they'll all be at the.
So at the entrances, when you come in, they won't be on the building or?
The Eversol one will be on the building where these decorations are at. The signs are decoration removal for March first and October first. Seems to be the safest spot, so it's not getting hit or broke or destroyed or stolen or. Also, concerns for the plans for the archway. For me to do, start again in quotes to get that tore down or ways to get that tore down. As that's something we're wanting to move forward with in the spring. Start working on that now, summer.
The spring is going to be really bad for that arch because as it starts thawing and the water starts channeling through and taking away even more of that archway. It's going to fall on a vehicle or someone. So if we can start getting quotes for that quickly as possible.
They're doing me to take it completely down?
I don't think there's anything salvageable there. I mean, wasn't it the, we were talking about the brick that has the established date keeping that?
The top part. I know there is two I, I beams inside there.
Steel, steel I beams?
Yes. So around the brick, there's two I beams on each side. If that helps you. The other stuff. But I know we talked about trying to save that if we could do something. I don't know what we can do with it, but.
See if we, if we, if it's savable.
Yeah, yeah. Personally, what I would like to see is that top part with the name and everything, if we could save it and when you drive in, put it right there, you know, like build it up or something. You know, put it on a pad or that's just an idea.
Once we can take it down.
Right.
What is the plan?
They crumble and.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Removing it possibly with a track O or cream, some, you know, cutting it out specifically, which is going to cost more.
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll look at different options all the way around and see different quotes. So we have a ballpark idea of what we're looking at.
Yeah, but I do know that there is, I don't know if you've looked at it, but there is two beams in there. Cause when I stuck my hand in.
It kind of looks like a cage that was built from what I saw.
Okay.
That's also looking through.
Yeah. When I had the maester and guy out there, you know, he said, that's when I stuck my hand through it and.
Right.
There's, that's it. So yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll work on getting quotes for that. Equipment, our trucks ran great through these recent storms. We've been through roughly twenty-four ton of salt. Trying to get through the one side of the barn that has been mixed with old grit and salt. It's just, it's just old. It's got layers of grit. Like a foot and a half thick. Just trying to get through that. So we know where we're at, what we have. Also started playing with the liquids that I got from the county. I've talked with the county about getting a tank to store some liquids in. That one, he's willing to just give that to us. It's a mixture of beet brine, just depending on the weather time, we can mix it like a seventy-five, twenty-five, so seventy-five percent beet and twenty-five percent brine. That's where I, I come from was a bunch of liquids. We kind of made our own spray bar and we used our herbicide sprayer, put it in the tank in the back of the pickup truck and we used it and it was strictly based on the proximity of the garage. So we could go out and come back and fill it. And I didn't know exactly how long it would last. We made three trips down Schoolhouse. Now, this is a little different storm. We got it, you know, ice and then we got lots of snow and lots of blowing, lots of, so it's hard to just judge that. But I also ran it on the hill at Providence coming down into Wolf Creek and the whole storm was pretty, pretty well wet. I mean, it was never an issue to slide through that or, you know, to cause an accident. I have a lot of faith used for using liquids myself. I believe it'll, it'll save us a ton of salt usage. The residual on the roadway is, is very good. It's down to a very low temperature. Depending on how it's mixed, obviously through, for beet to brine, you can get it down close to nine degrees, single digits. Which is a big deal.
It'll save the damage on the vehicles too.
A lot. Yes, lots. You know, right now we're throwing, we have a salt mixture with some, some stone and some spots where you put it down, there may be a lot more stone coming out compared to grit. And then on top of that, the spring, we're going to have to clean that up. Bikers, you know, motorcyclists. We don't have a good, efficient way to clean all that up right now. So there's ways of trying to get away from that.
Brine is very corrosive to cars' underbodies. Like that is, I think, the only drawback to the brine is your brake lines don't let.
It's solid.
Not like the brine. Brine is way worse.
Right. And there's, I mean, there's, you can look at it both ways. You can read until you're blue in the face on one way or the other.
Right.
I, I have personally dealt with tons of beet brine on the highway, seventy-five in Troy. I was, I drove the tanker and I mixed all of it.
As far as the residual leftover safety wise, though, it is way better.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, ideally it would be great to get away from salt completely, but I don't know who's going to come up with that solution yet. So other than, you know, and then it would, it would just be ice and, and we don't want that, but I don't know if you have concerns, questions or, or comments on the last snowfall issues, things that you guys saw. I don't know.
I just wanted to thank you. I thought you did a heck of a job. We drove around and we looked at the intersections and you did heck of a job pushing it and everything else. I was.
It was a tough one. I mean, as soon as they were plowed, I called you a couple of times. The wind would blow across and it would just re-glaze and it would instantly freeze and there was no getting ahead of it. It was just, you know, with the high winds and the ice already there, it was, kept refreezing in place. So I think you guys did a great job.
Yes.
You know, it's, it's a, it's a tough task to tackle when you have two guys, two trucks. It's a storm like that. You don't, you can't really split two people up. If you do get stuck, you're calling the guy in that's supposed to be sleeping or vice versa. So we ran tandem the whole time. Zach actually rode along with us Thursday night. And it made it safer for all of us. Things break. Thankfully we made it through the storm, the last two actually, no issues. We did have, I found some stones in our salt that were boulders. I mean, I don't know why it was mixed in there, how it got there. I don't, I have no idea, but that really clogs your auger up and you know, efficiency of your route. When you can't get salt, you can't get anything. You have to go back to the garage dome, spend two hours picking through that with a spud bar, just time consuming. You know, things you got to cross and things will get through and it will get better. Also with our building, thoughts on using our COVID funds for building our office area or tearing, tearing out the mold. I talked with Bryant and Mr. Worrell and they give me some ideas on the mold that we can tackle ourselves.
Right.
We're not, you know, stuck with a bill of seventy-five hundred bucks.
So it, the only problem that we have with that is that that building is literally falling apart in places. The mold on top of the, the cinder block that's giving way, the roof is a sieve. I mean, it, this was one of the things that we were talking about when it comes to as a township, what are we, what do we want to do administratively, right? This building, it's an older building. It's, it's definitely not in as bad a shape as the maintenance garage. But we're, we're putting more money into this building, the roof, the gutters, stuff like that. And does it make sense to come up with a single building? That has the garage, that has the police, that has the, the meeting area and stuff like that. That's the only caution right now with putting money into that area is we also have to tackle what does the next five, 10, 20 years look like for Perry Township? Cause that's a major investment, whether we do bonds, whether we do a levy, whether we do a loan with USDA at a fixed rate. That's, that's something that we would be on the line for, for twenty, thirty years. So I agree, it needs to be done, but it's also something that we have to weigh out with. Do we really want to put a Band-Aid on something that we could end up pivoting on in the next two years? Is the risk worth it? The mold definitely. I mean, the mold has to be dealt with. There's no question there. But I think with the amount of issues we have with the police force being too big for the little area, the little closet we make them stay in over here. The maintenance garage falling apart and the, the general upkeep of both buildings, it's a lot. And I think we may be well past the point of no return on fixing a lot of stuff. We may have to make do while we plan on what we're going to do moving forward. So that's something that I was going to bring up later that we need to, this is something where we need like a full afternoon, like a Saturday afternoon work session. We don't have a plan for this township. We don't have a vision. We don't have a five-year plan. We have a 10-year plan. A lot of stuff has always been dealt with reactionary, right? So it's something that's going to take more than just deciding do we want a new building or not? It's much more complicated than that. But I don't want to dismiss because that may end up being the outcome. So that is something I would say in the, probably the next month or two.
Work session.
We need to have a major weekend work session to start discussing this, figuring out options. You know, I've already talked, I talked to the USDA, what about a year and a half ago? When we were talking about doing some work that Hustler had mentioned with putting a second building on the property and then tearing down this building. So we got through that process, but we figured out that we needed to have a site survey. We had to have EPA evaluation. We had to have a number of things. And in that regard, we're probably better off doing something with the property where the maintenance garage is. There's much more property there. And maybe this property to offset that gets repurposed, sold, something along those lines where.
And we can make it a community.
Well, you can make a community center, but there again, then you're paying to upkeep the whole building. So that's what we had to figure out is we had to figure out how much, but this, we want to stay tethered to what we have. And how much do we want to try to invest in the future? And build something that's going to work for the whole township, not just for, you know, making people fit in very small areas that have been that way for a very long time. So long answer to your question is the mold does have to be dealt with as quickly as possible. But the rest of it, I would probably backburner a little bit, just until we figure out what we're doing, because this is going to be a major undertaking. And.
So that being said, should I cut out the drywall that's deteriorated? Like should I at least do something to that building instead of letting water just keep festering on the bottom of the boards and?
If there's stuff that we can do. If you have a plan for not doing the full plan, but dealing with the issues of the building and you bring that back to us, we can say yea or nay, and then you can move out and execute on that. That way we have the oversight on it and we don't want a miscommunication to cause you to go and buy a bunch of stuff. And then we're like, why'd you do that?
Sure.
So, you know, if you can come up with a substitution plan for how to deal with those trouble areas, best you can, bring that back to us and we can discuss that and we can get something done as quickly as possible.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll work on it. And then our roads, we've been working on the snow and ice control trucks, making sure we're, we're good to go on that. We've, we've got some potholes to patch currently. Any tree trimming trees on our routes and site distance issues. Once the snow's not three foot deep around everything. Also with the FEMA watershed program, I didn't add this on my, on my notes, but we, we have talked, he knows exactly where we're at. We agreed on paying our twenty-five percent of the, of the work that are reworking on that. I still have not heard back whether it was completed yet or not. He said he would call if there was any concerns, but I haven't heard back. So I think as far as I know, last I talked to Vic was, we're good on our end as far as we are not taking care of the work there. If we will be paying our, our twenty-five percent.
Good.
Fantastic.
That makes me feel better. Does that make you feel better?
Thousand times better. Yes. That was a stretch for no reason.
Yes, exactly.
That's all I have.
We'll deal with signs and new business. Report.
January stats are posted. We're currently working on our twenty-one, our twenty-two one stats. Hopefully those, those will be finished and published within the next thirty days. The Easter egg hunt is just around the corner. Still working on narrowing down a date for that. Officer Dakota Cox has placed his two-week notice yesterday. His last day will be February twenty-first. I don't know if you guys want to go ahead and accept that or wait till next month's meeting. The Kleisman case that had happened out here on Providence Road, I don't know if anybody remembers that. Mr. Kleisman was involved in a robbery in a multi-county or a multi-jurisdiction, jurisdictional theft. That was included in Delaware County, Miami County.
Um, that was included in Delaware County, Miami County, the city of Clayton, Clay Township and Union Police Department. Uh, that case has made it through the court system and he's been sentenced to six years in prison. And uh, I have three applicants in the hiring process. And the last thing, uh, I just gave. Right before the snowstorm, we were making preparations in case of power went out here to building. Um, I ended up running a generator from Brookville Rental. You can see there on the uh, on my sheet that that was two hundred and twenty-five dollars. That was for a week's worth of rental. Their policy is if it's three days, it's a week, right? So, uh, we had that weekly rate. I had Ed's HVAC plumbing and electric. Um, come out on a very short notice to install a switch to run the generator. Um, that was twelve hundred bucks. Uh, Detective Sergeant Tina Waymire went to Lowe's and purchased uh two. Freestanding heat lamps that ran off propane tanks. Um, I need a reimbursement for her for three hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-two cents. Um, and then also Lowe's uh for two propane tanks was a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. My question is, these bills haven't been paid yet, okay? Um, my question is, is can those bills be paid from the ARPA funds?
Believe they can. Um, we did do a little bit of conversation uh before this happened, just as. Some of this was stuff that we had talked about doing as lessons learned from the tornadoes, right? You have a generator and you don't have someplace to plug the generator, then you're running one or two extension cords in and trying to daisy chain everything off. It's unsafe. Um, I don't think there's a problem of paying this out of the ARPA funds because it, it was uh for infrastructure. Um, helping, this, this building's known for losing heat. Uh, actually, it's losing heat right now. You could probably have one of those lamps right behind you.
Yeah. And electric. I mean, there's times even during the summer where this building just loses power.
That's why I, I was just adding up, doing the, yeah.
And Jason, you and I talked, uh, you know, the one thing to kind of look at and start thinking about. As some type of permanent generator for the building. Um, there's multiple ways, you know, we can try to obtain one, either new, used, uh, off gov deals. Um, I can look into the ten thirty-three program that we're involved in and see if the military has any that they have.
Yeah, release.
I'd be able to get one up the RMOs. Yep. And uh, and things. So I'm gonna start looking into that, those avenues. Um, to see if we can't get one either used, donated through the ten thirty-three program or what have you, so. Um, but the one that we had from Brookville Rental was more than enough to run the building minus the furnace. Um, because of the furnace is so big, wasn't gonna operate the uh, the furnace, so. But the lights, um, the internet phones, those types of things, it was gonna run no problem.
And I, I wanna be very clear that uh, it doesn't matter if the power goes out in this building for a lot of stuff that happens here. But the power goes out for the police, they're done the water. There is no backup. They can operate out of the uh. Forensic vehicle slash supervisor vehicle slash et cetera so on that it's a multipurpose for. But that is not a full solution. So this is definitely something that we needed to do to make sure that we have the ability to maintain our police force. Um, during one of the times that we definitely need it most, during a weather issue or a uh weather crisis. So, um, I will make a motion to reimburse the amount. Of one thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. For the items that were purchased. Brookville Rental Sales Generator, the HVAC uh switch, the uh two heat lamps. And the propane tanks. Out of the uh ARPA funds.
Are we gonna keep the heat lamps and stuff for later use?
Putting a switch in, I mean, it's going for the same situation.
You wanna put?
I mean, it's a thought because the only thing that I. I mean, obviously heat, but if that goes out and we'll figure that out. But I was just gonna bring my own generator in.
Yeah.
Just to get the garage door stork.
Yeah, cause like you said, if, if the power goes out, which we did flash there, you couldn't get the garage, you couldn't get the garage door open.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, just something to think about in the long run too. I mean, if that's something.
That's definitely something that we would need to do. I mean, it, it, that, to me, that's not something that would, you know, be immediately undone by. Any future plans. It's something we need to operate.
I was second that.
Yeah, so it's good. Thank you. I was gonna say the motion is still on the floor.
Can you check with?
No, you're fine.
Can you check? Are you comfortable with this Ed's coming out and looking at yours?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, as long as, I don't know, it's, I mean, whoever works there or whatever, but um.
Can you do that?
We're getting a nod from Officer Douglas back there.
I mean, I've heard good things about him. I just, I don't know anybody that works there.
Okay.
So.
If you could check and see if they could check and see.
Yep.
Okay. If that's okay with you.
Okay.
I can see if they can come out and do an estimate for you.
Yeah, cause on the back of the building, there's, I don't know, four or five different lines coming in there and I'm not about to jump into that. I can't see it. I don't wanna die by it.
Trustee Mears.
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn.
Yes.
Trustee Music.
Yes. Did you have anything else, Chief?
Uh, just where we stand, sir, with a motion now or next month with Dakota Cox?
I, I, I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Officer Cox effective February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Second, sorry.
Trustee Music.
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn.
Yes.
Trustee Mears.
Yes.
How many?
I have three applicants. Um, I have one full-time for sure, some part-time. Um, that still have room for part-time officers. We use Indeed, that seems to be a good uh source for us. Uh, however. Going through there and picking qualified applicants that they are already certified or going through the police. With a little rough, because you have people that are applying just to fulfill requirements that are required to do in order to receive benefits and. I think, but that's where we're getting a lot of our applicants from.
Well, I will give this to you. You can look at this over front and back. That's the cost of bringing someone in new.
Yep.
And then the uh, Chief went over this kind of, okay, our meeting, we, I got some, discussed a, yeah. And that's definitely something else we're gonna be getting into is um, this is another officer that left to uh pay.
Yep.
And uh, we've been talking about the fact that we need to basically be more competitive. In that regard, since we're trying to maintain a twenty-four seven uh police presence in Perry Township. And that's gonna be part of the, the police levy work that we're gonna have to get into to figure out uh on the backside of that, actually. Uh, Chief laid out notionally, what he feels is necessary for uh being able to. Have a police force that's more than competent and competitive in this area.
And that's another thing that maybe we can talk about at the work session. Because uh Chief Littleton and I, we have discussed this. Um, and uh, he's, you know, we went over everything. And things that he's wanting or, you know, that we're meeting. And also by asking to get uh things from the other departments, you know, where, where they were in pay.
Right.
Okay.
We did, so I met, after I met with you, I met with Brian and Tina and that sheet. Uh, has been revised just as of like an hour ago. Um, but it's still a working progress, but from the quick research that Brian had done. Um, was it Germantown?
Yes, sir.
What was, what was starting pay in the top out?
It's twenty-three, forty-four an hour and their top out is twenty-eight, seventy-three dollar.
So with what I have there, you know, the twenty, and I think the top out was twenty-five. I mean, you can see that's. Pretty comparable. I mean, we're still a little bit on the low side from Germantown, but it's much more comparable than where we're at now and, and things. Um. Since we're on this topic, we had also crunched some numbers. There was seven officers. Six or seven officers that are no longer here, right? Okay. Some left for better pay, others left for other reasons. But when you're looking at the sheet of what it costs for a full-timer and a part-timer. Since two thousand and eighteen, when I came in in October, as of today. On the low end, we have gone through ninety-one, little over ninety-one thousand dollars to hire people. And to pay people and then they're gone within eighteen months, between six to seven officers. That's not including the trainings that they have gone to or anything else. That is just their base pay, not overtime, nothing.
And that's including clothing. It's everything else, yeah.
That's, that was with the numbers there on that sheet where for a full-timer, before I get any. Um, return on my investment, I'm at thirteen thousand dollars and the part-timers, there's eleven, a little over eleven thousand. But that's the numbers that I took because they were all full-time with the exception of one. So that's ninety-one thousand and some change, just right there based upon that sheet.
So that's for them to take the written exam, the, the psych test, everything that they have to have.
So.
Before they can even be hired.
Right. And, you know, the majority of those officers that left was, you know, to better pay.
Right.
And, and things. So, I mean, it's a. Reoccurring theme and things, but you know, my, my plan is with Brian and Tina. Um, you know, we're working on some pretty hard numbers and putting a budget together that what all of this would look like, right? So, the pay, um, including the insurance, everything that was responsible for the, this township has to pay for. More importantly, the police department has to pay for. But then, you know, what the training budget would look like for that, you know, what the fuel expense potentially would look like for that. Um, you know, all that, you know, all my line items, we'd be broken down and budgeted. So that way everything is nice and transparent to anybody who wants to see, right, why we're needing. This levy and why this is being brought up after a couple of years of already passing line, so.
That's definitely, yeah.
So, be, so if, before I get to mine, can I? Can I go ahead and, and entertain a motion regarding a potential police levy? And Miss Hrow, will you read the draft resolution twenty-two oh seven? And you wanna explain to them what, what it, what that is, what we're asking for?
I'll read the draft and then I'll explain. Um, a resolution requesting Montgomery County Auditor's Office certify to Perry Township. The total current value, tax value of Perry Township and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the police levy. Renewal of both existing levies, the two-point or two-point-oh mil issued five-five of nineteen ninety-eight. And five-point-oh mil issued five-seven of two thousand and two. Begin tax year twenty-twenty-two with a collection year of, in twenty-twenty-three. To provide necessary funding to support our police services as authorized in the ORC section fifty-seven oh five. Point one-nine, section J, to be voted on November first, two thousand twenty-two general election ballot. Basically what it is, is we have to request um from Montgomery County Auditor's Office for them to provide us with a certification. Of what it would look like based on the current property values of all the properties in Perry Township. They would do a comparison. They would give us what bringing current values of the properties. Would do to those existing levies. It would renew them and we would put those back in place for a continuous period of time. It would give us an option then to look to see what doing that would bring in, generate additional funds versus what they're currently generating. So then we can make a determination whether we wanna go that route or if we need to start with a fresh levy. But we have to petition before we can even start any of the other process.
This is for November's election.
It would be for November's ballot.
So I make that motion that we go ahead and do that from Montgomery County, resolution twenty-two oh seven.
I second it.
So that way at least we know what we're dealing with when we do have the work session.
Trustee Hartshorn.
Yes.
Trustee Mears.
Yes.
Trustee Music.
Yes.
Zone, subject of the, I'm sorry, of, of, of the levies. We already started this process with the fire levy?
No, we have not started this process with the fire levy, yeah.
Okay, zoning.
Um, I'm still assisting Caleb with the cemetery deeds and the burial permits. And on January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, I met with Caleb, um, Hopes, David Stack and Patrick. Uh, with Oasis and went over the cemetery page, test page. Um, the first quarter. Trash bills were mailed January seventh, twenty-twenty-one. There were one thousand two hundred ninety-four mailed. And we have received one thousand payments from the Perry Township residents as of today. Um, due to the bad weather, uh, some recycles may have not been picked up by Rumkey. I did receive an email from Monk and they said that they are now back on schedule to pick up trash and recycles. On the, on the regular schedule. Um, zoning, um, I went to the OTA conference in Columbus over January twenty-sixth, twenty-seven, twenty-eighth. And learn a lot, met some great people and contacts, and I'm looking forward to going to next year's conference. Um, I'm working with Trustee Mears and Susan Carville with Montgomery County Landbanks regarding some properties in Paramount. I've completed our portion of the paperwork needed to get the property at forty-six thirty-three North Sulphur Springs Road. Put on the Montgomery County uh Landbanks list for demolition. This property is, is not secure. The front of the building has been removed. And I would like to entertain a motion that Perry Township Board of Trustees approved the purchase of materials needed to secure. That property and the cost will be reimbursed to the township by landbanks per Susan. Uh, the program manager through Montgomery County Landbanks.
I think that motion is read.
I second it.
Trustee Music.
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn.
Yes.
Trustee Mears.
Yes.
It was on my list tonight to ask, though. We're at with that because it's wide open.
I know, I'm telling you. Since the last trustee meeting, there's been no permits issued, but I have received. Uh, three applications that I'm currently working on um to get. These people the permits that they need. Um. The BCA meeting that we had scheduled for Thursday, February the, the third was canceled due to the bad weather. So I am in, uh, worked on it today and am, am rescheduling for March third at seven PM. Um, I'm still working with residents that have received violation notices. And the residents that have received the courtesy notices, letters that I have not heard back from will be receiving a violation notification. That's all I have.
How many of the two hundred and ninety-four uh non-payments so far on the trash are habitual? Non-payers?
Same people.
Always the same, right?
And then in September, they'll, or August, they'll receive a letter.
Right.
That if they don't pay, then it's gonna be assessed on their taxes and then that has to be into the auditor's. Are there, I think it's the Auditor's Office or Treasurer's Office.
Auditor's.
That, um, it has to be in there by the second Monday in September.
We submitted those last year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wanna keep that up in the everybody's radar that those are, you know, we have a percentage of people that just refuse to pay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Trustee reports. Uh, for the last month, I've continued to work on the uh social media and uh digitizing of documentation for presentation on the website. Uh, from general IT maintenance to. Perform upkeep of township PCs and systems. Did install the new monitor, a little tiny monitor in front of me. Um, I moved a larger monitor that was purchased into the lobby as that was. Uh, needed. Uh, we terminated our host Papa services as of January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. And I believe the prorated amount left on that. And I believe the prorated amount left on that, because we had it until May, that that would be coming back to us. Uh, continued weekly driving inspections of the township roads, cemeteries and new some properties. I've been working on reviewing the cost of hiring a new officer, stole my steam there, chief. Um, of hiring a new officer and projected cost to maintain our police force and preparation for the police levy. Uh, research we're gonna have to do. And unfortunately, I was unable to attend the Ohio Township Association, but I did reimburse township. For that, I put it in your drawer, I don't know if you received it. And that is all I have for this month.
Okay, again, I, I want to thank. Drew for doing a heck of a job, first time. Uh, there is a property that we have on, uh, Phil Piermont. Uh, that is abandoned and it has a lot of, uh. It's one of those that we were going to have to have cleanup. I was contacted by the bank and we have someone that is interested in buying it. They're trying to get it on a short sale, so if they do, we won't have you guys clean it up, they'll clean it up. Um, I attended the OTA, uh, good classes, um, been working with Ms. Kayler on zoning issues. I met with Chief Littleton regarding. The levy updates and things like that. Um. Caleb, on Pleasant Hill on the gates, did we decide that we were want to put those on Gov Deal?
I haven't got that far.
Okay, is that something that we can do?
Yeah.
Okay, because I've.
It, I mean, we wanting to just mail them as we go or, uh, do it as a whole process. I can take those gates out and put them on Gov Deals.
Yeah, there's, I've had two people call and say, I want those gates.
They'll be on Gov Deals.
And you may drive by and they'll, they'll be gone, so. I'm just telling you.
Hope not.
I mean, if, if there's an interest, we can post it on the Facebook saying that township recently put stuff on Gov Deals and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Give those links. So if you sent, email me those links, I.
Okay.
And then something that I found interesting that Ms. Taylor told me today, when she was talking to Ms. Simon, who is on our B Z A. Regarding, uh, one of the properties in Piermont. Uh, the one building that we're thinking about taking down, I don't know if anybody knows it, that used to be a Liberty. Stable?
Liberty, yeah.
Right? Okay, well, on that building is a star.
Cast Irons. Fire, yeah.
Cast Iron Star. And they're also on the other property. So they were asking maybe if we could before they tore down the building, if we could take those stars off. And, uh, me and Ms. Caleb were talking today and I said, if, if that is possible. It would be nice for us as Perry Township to donate it to the historical society. So that's something I'd like to. Check before they.
Yeah, as long as, uh, the land bank doesn't have a problem with us doing it.
Right, and.
Fine, it would just be part of the securing of property anyway.
Right. And Ms. Simon also said that, um, she read somewhere that those stars have a meaning of some sort. She's gonna find out what that is and, and make sure that we get a copy.
But that was, is that one of the oldest ones? You know?
I don't know, I think both buildings are gonna want to think.
But that one was a Liberty stable, so.
The first one coming down.
Yes.
Gonna be, that what, that's what I was told, it was a Liberty state.
And Caleb, on, on closing that up, we're not asking you to do all the entrances.
Just the front entrance is what we're wanting done? Is there a?
Right, yeah, as long as we can keep it, get it secured, if there's, at the other doors. You know, looks like that they're easy access and we do need to secure those.
Do we? Do we need?
Somewhat, I mean, you're not going to be able to secure it like it should be. The other day I went by and I had to call Chief Littleton at seven forty five in the morning because there was a scrapper going through. And I was afraid he was going to fall through the floor.
Now there's holes.
Yeah, I mean, they've cut it out.
Mission to get started tomorrow, we could go look at.
Yes.
Yes.
And then, do we need a police presence there?
No, because.
No.
Squatters, no.
No, there's no.
No.
Not at that.
If you feel like you need one, always ask.
We'll, we'll enter with the shovel.
Say no, alright.
Just don't go in. I don't want you in there.
Right.
If you could do it from outside.
Yeah, I mean, basically, all we need is any entrance. Were those doors, look, that they were secured there on the side?
Yeah, but if, if, if we start doing that, my God, you're gonna have to do the front versus.
Yeah, they, I did get that verified by, uh, Suzie. If the doors open and just put a board over it and spread it on so they can't. I mean, I, I don't know if you.
Do out as where it's been blowing and.
Yes.
Right, yeah. And I, you know, I obviously am not savvy on the stuff, but you know, I don't know if you would need to get tuba fours. Or whatever to secure them, to have something to put the plywood, you know, connected to, I don't know.
Yeah, but I would, my, myself. Me and Ms. Taylor have been out there with Suzie and I would prefer you not to go in, because like I said, there's no floor. You walk in so far and then you're down. Right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah.
And Chief Littleton's been in it. And the other day when I found the scrapper, you know. Which he could have got hurt, it won't come back on us, but I just, yeah, so.
But I know that there's kids in that neighborhood and as it starts warming up, it worries me that they may, you know, and now that I know that. We can secure it and we will be in reverse, reimbursed for the cost, I think that we need to do that.
Do we want to put that on our, our Lowe's card or do we want to put that on our? Figure card? Just for easy, I don't know how easy it is to get reimbursed and, you know, you got a month on.
I would just look and see, I would look to see what's going to be most cost effective, because I mean Lowe's isn't always the cheapest on the supplies, so.
That's.
Just keep records of whatever you.
Right, and the receipts, that's what Suzie asked for.
Just keep.
And your time.
Yes, and your time, because you will get, we will get reimbursed for your time.
Okay, I get it taken care of. No problem.
And that's all I have.
Trustee Music? So I did, uh, I attended the OTA conference as well. Uh, a lot of great information there. Uh, one thing I took away from, I shared with Caleb the other night. Uh, I'm gonna try and work on this either with Caleb or do it and then present it to Caleb and he can take it with what he wants is a, uh. Basically, a layout of all the township roads, square yardage, condition of these roads. And that a way, we can prioritize what is our most important to get fixed. Uh, if someone has a question about their road, we know exactly where it's at. Uh, and if we ever needed quotes, we've already got the square yardage and a spreadsheet that we can present to whichever company. For cost effective or cost analysis. Um, I did ride along with Caleb and David the other night, um. From nine to one thirty. The roads are fantastic as far as I'm concerned with what we had. I mean, there was, there was some side roads with blowing that were pulling the dump truck off the rip. Um, and then, you know, driving around looking at county roads compared to ours. I'm more than pleased, so good job to you guys. Can't say enough about it. Unless you've been out to see it at that night. It's a task to drive that dump truck down that road and not know where the roads at.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, very easily, like you said, get off the road. So I just, I was tickled to get the opportunity to go out with you guys, I appreciate it. And that's, that's really all I have. Okay. New business to discuss this evening? Okay, new business?
Yes.
Okay.
I do. Uh. I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session. Uh, let's see, one to one. Point two two. G one, to consider the appoint, uh, appointment, uh. Movement for employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, motion or conversation of a public employee.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to re-enter into regular session.
Second.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Okay, so we are still in new business. Wait, wait, you're looking at me? So, one of the things that I wanted to address here was, I wanted to make a motion to. Accept. To pay the four twenty five for the four new cemetery signs that you brought up, Caleb?
Yep.
So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, pay four hundred twenty five dollars to have those cemetery signs purchased and put up in the cemeteries.
Second.
Christie Mears?
Yes.
Christie Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes. Okay. Do we want to talk about planning for a work session? Deal with one of the two topics that we've already discussed, whether it's the township planning or. Both of them are, they're, they're, they're related, so whichever one we talk about, we're gonna have to have the other one as well at some point in the near future, so. So, if I could, I, I, I think, I think the township planning.
Yep.
Before the police, only for the reason of if, if that's going to be, that's going to be a conversation involved in the new building.
Yeah.
So I, I don't want to make these decisions, kind of police levy side, if this could go a different direction.
Right.
Okay, so, we will find a date here around the end of the month.
Yep.
Preferably a Saturday. To, uh, come in and have that working session to work through. Without a, a plan of.
Where we got.
Where the township's going in the next five, ten years, twenty years, and, uh. They, I mean, we should be actually able to work on a, uh, a vision document. To outline a lot of the stuff that we're gonna do and it's gonna be a living document, it's gonna evolve over time as different things happen, so. That'll be very similar to the one we've had in the past where we've.
Right.
Pull up our sleeve, so. Okay, any other new business? Okay, before we get into visitors, there was a couple of comments on the chat that I wanted to read out. Real quick. One of the questions was regarding the electric heaters we bought last year. Are the, those are still being, I think someone said last month or maybe a couple of months ago, they're being stored out the maintenance garage, is that?
Yes.
So electric heaters?
And in my garage.
Have those.
In my office. I got one in my office.
But if electric's out, those don't work very well.
Right.
Right, so that was the, I guess that was the point, was we, we got the kerosene heaters, in case power went out, keep the building heat up. But we still do have those electric heaters and some of them are still being used in the building. Um, there was another comment about asking. If the current township building could be registered as a historical building with a landmark sign and then apply for a grant, make. Grant money to make it a community center. Unfortunately, I, I think we chased this one aground previously, that this building could not be deemed a historical building. I don't remember the exact context of it. You can look into it, but, but the, the bottom line with this building. Is that we would still have to maintain it.
Right.
We would have, if it was a community center, we'd have to pay someone to be here. We'd have to upkeep the building, clean the bathrooms, clean the building, uh, secure the building, etc. So. There's a number of options that could be out there that we'll get into, uh, as we start talking about planning for the township. But one of the, I, I think one of the important things to keep in mind is. If we are looking at building another building, or we're looking at condensing into a singular building at one location. Keeping an additional building just for the sake of keeping an additional building and all the monetary, uh. Requirements that would come with that, would, would likely be more than we could handle as a township at this time, but. Not discounting it, I'm just saying, based on. What we've been looking at over the last couple of years, that anything that we do would likely be moving anew and. Trying to find a, other purposes for the properties that we have, so. Uh, Mr. Mears, you had checked your yes box?
I answered, we're good.
Okay, you're good, alright, excellent. Uh, Ms. Huff?
Hello?
Hello.
I just wondered about maybe a committee for the cemetery, like a beautification committee. Just so. Public knows what's going on. Before it happens.
Yeah, we, we talked, I think it was before COVID, about establishing a couple of committees and one of them, I think that at that time trustee. When it talked about was, uh, something tied to the cemeteries. I think that's, that's a, a good idea, definitely something that we could look at as part of our planning going forward. Any committees that we would establish would have a trustee tied to it and a resident. Running point on that, just to make sure that the communication is covered on both sides. And that unfortunately, so far, we haven't gotten back to.
No.
Establishing any committees or anything else, but this is definitely something that we could move forward and start talking about how we would do it.
Is that before any more changes are made or is that? I mean, you know, I like input into what they're gonna do. You know, to replace the archway or maintain that archway or whatever.
Right, yeah, um. Right now, I think the only thing that we have really lined up for that is, is dismantling it because it is a safety hazard. So we have no immediate plans to replace it. We've talked previously about getting ideas from the residents, the community, etc. Or even ideas from this side of the table to see what we could do there. But yeah, we would, that would definitely be something that I'd be willing to consider before we, we do anything.
Other than taking down the archway, because the archway has to.
The archway has to come down because it's, it's a.
Even though, I mean, you mentioned it supports, interior supports, I mean, can't something be made around those existing supports?
Well, you're talking everything that is, uh, when I, when I met with the maester people. He, he showed me and because of all the water damage, he said, okay, push right here. And I did, my hand went completely through the block. So instead of it being fixed correctly over the years, it was just patched. So all the water has ran down and it's, uh, cinder blocks and all the cinder blocks have.
Just eroded, yeah.
So they're all gone. And if you go there, there now, you can see, drive through and there's pieces falling. And so if we have a, a, a funeral, it, it can fall down or whatever. And yes, there is I beams there, but that means then we have to. We don't know what up here, how good that's.
And we don't know what state those are in. With the water running through that archway, those could be completely eroded in spots. But that would be, I mean, if there was any way to reuse anything associated with that, we would look into it.
Yes.
But it, it would have to be structurally approved to be reused.
Because I know there are some. Pigs or whatever you call those, those are completely gone. If you look at them, the concrete's just coming off, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One backside's completely gone. I, I talked to a gentleman, he called after last meeting. There's, there's several people that do CNC plasma cutting and, and they have, uh, metal shops. That maybe I could reach out to, a few of them live in our township, about maybe getting one cut out as an archway and possibly donating that. As something to put back. I have not got that far, I haven't even entertained that because we have to take it down first. Um, it's something I'll start presenting to people that I, I know that are, are capable of doing that. Um, and see where it goes as far as putting it back, but I, I still have to get information to put that in, so.
You mentioned people are already asking to take bits and pieces of the archway, did you say that?
No, the, we, we had the fence and we took the fence out and sold it on Gov Deal and there's two gates. That's in the archway and people are asking about those.
So how do you determine who gets the gates?
You, you would put them on Gov Deal, whoever, it's like an auction.
It's a bid.
It's a bid.
So you'd put a bid in, somebody else put one in, and we go back and forth, the highest bid would, would get it.
I mean, the fence, the fence that we sold went to Arkansas.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, somebody from Arkansas bought it.
Right, so there's no local sales or it's just all?
Gov Deals.
It's Gov, I mean, anybody can.
Yeah, you can get on anybody.
Yes, anybody can get on it.
We can't sell direct, it has to go through Gov Deals.
Yes.
As of us being a government entity and stuff, we're required, we have certain protocol that we have to follow. Anytime we sell anything, we can't just, somebody comes in and says they want to buy it, we can't just sell it to them.
And Emma, you, you said you were going to have a website?
For our cemeteries or a website for what?
We, well, I guess it's for your department would be maintenance cemeteries and was that it?
So what we're, what, what we're doing is, we're basically going through and we're gonna be doing GPS mapping of all the cemeteries. So every plot will be identified by its geographic location, there will be a picture of that grave and then. And then there'll be any other information that we have based on the ownership of the grave, et cetera, so on. And it'll be in an open database that's searchable. On our website. On our website, the township website. Right now, we're in the early phases of that where they, they've run a mockup with a few examples of how they would do it with the, the GPS pins that they put at each grave or each lot. And so we're talking, we, we actually talked earlier about starting that process. Figuring out how we're going to do that with our technical consultant Oasis. And also get trained on how we can do it then to save us, save the money, but be able to do it in a way that it would be able to compile together and be usable for the residents and anyone who's used the cemeteries for Perry Township. Thank you, thank you. I didn't have anyone else with yes checked. Okay, that said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Music, trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.